Welcome, everybody. It's January 2nd, 2020. First of all, Happy New Year to everybody. Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education Building and School Facilities Committee. Five o'clock, we are now open. We have a full roster, and we have two agenda items tonight. And for Agenda Item Number One, which is the approval of the final plans for the Wendell Cross Project, I turn it over to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Happy New Year to everybody. This is round three, or Phase Three. We've been to you twice before for Phase One and Phase Two. Phase Three is the most exciting phase, and we're very happy to be here tonight with members of our committee, with Friar and Newfield, Michael Blank from the city as well, to just go through some of the actual design. Phase Three is the building construction element of this project. So, the first two phases, as you may recall, abatement and demolition, then Phase Two is site, concrete, and steel. This is the general building construction. Phase Four would be the playground element. Phase Five, furniture fixtures and equipment. The state, the DAS, sets it up this way to sort of work these phases as you work through. Again, this is the most exciting phase, and now we're ready to review with you the plans that will be submitted to the state, and we'll be up there in a couple of weeks to review these plan documents with them that hopefully you will approve tonight. This will keep us on schedule and keep us within our plans for the construction process. So, I am not going to speak a lot tonight. I'm going to reserve the time for the boards and for questions for you folks. Ultimately, we'll ask that you ultimately will be approving this. The second item on the agenda is the review of the plans, and that's what we'll do next here with your indulgence. The only other thing I would say as an introduction is, this has continued to be a really collaborative process. What you'll see and hear about tonight has been worked on with the school. It's been worked on in close collaboration with the city partners, building officials, health officials, et cetera, as well as our facilities team, our security team, our IT team. So, we have seen the plans, the specifications, designs, building off of that Carrington model or theme. As you recall, we discussed the past, and the best from that, and pushing out some of the things that may not have worked as well, but also updating state-of-the-art issues, things that we found to be successful in the facilities area, IT area, security area, or the instructional area, meeting with some of the parents, teachers, faculty, administration of the school. So, that's what you're going to hear about tonight, and we have our whole team here. And we'll spend some time, leave some time for answering questions, but I'm going to turn it over now to Alicia Roselli from Friar Architecture to walk us through these boards. And I'd ask, as we go through the process, feel free to get up and interact, but I'll turn it over for Alicia to walk us through.
I'm Alicia Roselli. I'm a project manager with Friar Architecture. So, I'll start with the site plan. Just received bids for Phase Two, so that'll be underway shortly. Your existing bus loop has remained in about the same area. We've expanded it, we've added parking, but just to get yourselves oriented, it's in the same place. The existing portion of the building includes the last four classrooms and the recently added elevator. We've kept the main entrance in that same location, and your classroom wings branch off of that. We've added a few retaining walls to maximize your parking. It's nearly doubled. It's about 79 now, I think up from 45. And then we've created a safer bus loop and parent drop-off because we separated the two. So, if you take that orientation and you rotate at 90 degrees, that's how all of our floor plans are shown tonight. So, when you enter the building, all of your assembly spaces are going to be off of that main entrance. So, what that allows you to do is shut down the classroom wings at night so that parents and families are just in this main area, and you don't have people going all over the school. So, we'll use that with different technology and the door access control. You'll have a man trap at the main entrance, so during times that aren't bus drop-off or pickup, you'll get buzzed into the vestibule, and then you'll get buzzed in again to your main entrance, so you don't have anyone that's coming directly into the school. From there, you have your cafeteria with your platform. Adjacent to that is your music room, so that you can easily bring your instrumental performances to the platform. Across from that is your gymnasium. This is a middle-school-sized gymnasium with locker rooms off of that. We have a full cooking kitchen. And then from there, we've broken up your middle-school grades from your primary grades. So, as you go south, you have sixth grade on your main level, and above that, you have seventh and eighth, and the science labs on the upper level. And what this site really allowed us to do was give on-grade access at all three of the levels in the school building. So, it's rare that students are going downstairs and out. Most students are going directly out. So, as you move north from your main office area, you have a lot of your services, your guidance, your OTPT spaces, and your nurse's office. And then from there, you have the large classroom wing. So, along the bus drop-off, we have all the pre-K and K classrooms. All those students are actually going to be egressing directly outside in the event of a fire drill. On the opposite side, we have grades one through three up here, as well as resource rooms at the main level. And then on your lower level, you're going to have your upper elementary grades, you'll have your media center. We've split up art rooms, so pre-K doesn't have to take the stairs to art. We have another art room downstairs. So, can I answer any questions on the floor plans?
Commissioners, any questions at this point? Nope, doing a great job.
All right. So, I guess from there, we took a look at, we looked at all the finishes. We spoke with members of this... Yep, so these were at the south end in your middle-school area. You had grades seven and eight, and your two science labs on the upper level. That you're egressing at grade, that's where your existing elevator is. And then you also have an additional entrance up there, so should it be inclement weather when you're having an evening event, you could come in here. We've cordoned off the rest of the school. You can use the stairs, you can use the elevator, and you can get down to the cafeteria and gymnasium.
What is the aggregate square footage of this complete project versus what we came from?
This complete project is 86,000, so we have 8,000 existing square feet, which is this portion and beyond, 78 new. And I think your original school was about 40,000.
So, we almost have a 100% improvement?
Yes, almost. Sure.
Yes, thank you. Could you point out in this second, I think it's the second one, where you point it to the elevator?
Sure.
Show me, I know we're going to come around with that, but show me where the entrance is as opposed to the elevator.
Okay. So, we actually have three elevators in this project. Your main entrance is here. The existing elevator was at this end, and that was to make the original school accessible. But to get access to all three levels and working with the topography, we added two additional elevators. There's a service elevator here, which works just as well for passengers, but that's where your deliveries will come in at the upper level and get brought down here. And then the next new elevator is right around the corner, across from the main office, and that will get you to the lower level.
Okay. So, where, show me the entrance again?
Sure, it's here.
Okay.
Main entrance is here, and then your elevator is around the corner. So, you'll come past the cafeteria and into the elevator, and then the other elevator is just past the gym, and that will take you to the upper level.
All right, so how, my question is really, how far from the entrance? How far does one have to go from the entrance to get to the elevator?
I would guess it's probably...
And elevator?
Probably about 120 linear feet.
Okay. All right, I'll have to measure that out because I'm not sure how long that is, because it's, you know, once you get into an entrance, then you have to be concerned about the distance that you have to walk or ride, you know, to get to the elevator. That's a concern, that's a concern. So, I'll probably have to measure that out just to see.
I'm guessing it would probably be about one and a half times the length of this space.
Okay.
Probably not much difference from entering Wham's, going across to the elevator.
Okay, okay.
But there are guidelines delineated by the state on how much footage from an entrance to a foyer is for people's access, isn't there?
Oh, there is. All right. So, yes, there are...
I seem to remember from my last job, we always had to keep like 150-foot distance from the car to the entrance at the farthest.
Yes, and the nice thing about the, because this is built into the existing topography, if you park up here, you can easily get in here. We'll have an intercom. You're going right in, and you're going right down the elevator.
I do have one more question, only because I have nightmares in my previous career. I built like 12 buildings on ESPN's campus, and nobody ever thanked me in the winter for not being able to plow the driveway. Has this been signed off as a plowable existence for your guys?
Yes.
And EPW, okay.
We've actually had one modification since this rendering was completed. We actually took out these islands here, and we have big concrete light bases, so it'll be a lot easier to maneuver.
I never had that problem in Singapore, thank God.
Where is outdoor lighting for nighttime?
Okay, so this plan, so it'll be coming all the way up the drive. It'll wrap this parent drop-off area. They'll be building mounted lighting around the entire school, so when the kids, if there is a fire alarm in the winter, and it's the afternoon and it's getting dark, there'll be illumination coming all the way around. We have poles along the retaining wall, and those are going to illuminate both the upper and lower lots. We have cameras on these poles as well. We'll also, you have your existing stair down to Hamilton Avenue. We have light poles along there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, on the bottom panels are really some of the finishes and the colors, choices that are being worked through at this time, so you can take a peek at those later or come up and touch them. Again, much like President Kamala's question, these were talked through, reviewed with staff, and trying to align with current use in the building, current hopes of what they can go to, lining up with the school colors, but also being cognizant of maintenance concerns, you know, longstanding, the tile choice is not something we'll have to wax, for example, and can sustain itself. So, we're very much thoughtful of that sustainability, usability, and also, you know, cleanability, if you will. So, all those pieces, there's a story behind each of them, and how the gym, again, floor, the stage floor, those types of things. Having been through this with different schools, we discussed all the different options, looked at different examples within the system, and within what Friar and Newfield have used, and those are all part of the conversations that went into all this, all this planning. So, I could tell you that from the demolition standpoint and the abatement standpoint, that's all moving along. If you swing up to the site now, you won't see the gym anymore and those sorts of things. So, that piece is moving right along. So, this approval tonight will allow us to get up to the state with the plans, again, that we are reviewing with Gil and the zoning folks. There is a third-party reviewer that also engages in this, so that we're meeting all the code compliance, so the questions about the elevators and entrances and so forth. So, all that will be verited and verified and proved out before we go up on the 16th, I believe it is. And then with those plans, the state will give their approval, hopefully, allowing us to go out to bid, and that will allow us to keep on schedule, get the bids out later this winter for the construction work to begin in a few months' heads.
Sorry, I have one afterthought question. Could you just go through the circulation of the buses and the parent drop-off, and what that's going to look like when both of those are converging on that site?
Yeah, so the, the, those of you familiar with the current school situation when they were there, the buses would come through the loop, and parents kind of looped up top, and it, you know, worked like a sort of nice ballet when it worked well. So, we're hoping to strike up that band again and do that as well. But essentially, you'd have the buses coming through the loop up top here, and this divider is very similar to the Carrington design. That was discussed with the fire marshal and the fire department as far as their emergency access, even in a situation where there may be cars traversing and so forth. So, they would come up through and drop right by that main entrance, and parent drop-off would loop around, allowing for more parents to participate in that, and basically, they can then drop up here by this entrance, and the kids can enter the cafeteria from this side. So, pre-K is more over here as well, which that would allow that ease for that drop-off. So, you're kind of splitting how the kids are coming into the building, bus, pre-K, and the parent drop-off, and then, of course, you still have some walkers who'll be coming up the stairs and whatnot, so they would come up the stairs and probably take into this entrance as well.
So, but on the way out, it's buses mixed with cars?
Right, so there's a stop here, and that'll all be marked, and that's similar to how it worked in the prior site. Parents would be up top, and they'd come out. Usually, the buses will flow through, and then the parents all flow out.
Thank you.
Juanita?
Will, where's the front door?
Front?
Is that the front door?
No. So, I'll, it's up here where this arrow is pointing to it, the main entrance. So, where you're pointing is over here. So, there'll be, the idea was that there'll be playground, playscapes here as you come up the hill. On the left side will be the, you'll see playscapes as you come up the hill, and then you'll hit the pre-K and the lower grades on your left side. You'll drive straight up, and the main entrance, it's really not far from where the current main entrance is, if you think of the current school. It's just kind of jogged a little bit, and that will be that main entrance where she said is the trap, that double entrance. You come in the first buzzer, and then you could be led into the administration office or buzzed into the main building. That cutoff, I think, that Alicia described, is also important because it allows us, from an HVAC standpoint, we could just leave on the heat or the air in the gym and the calf, but not service the academic wing, shut those doors up and save that. So, you know, the technology that will be put in place is something that also is familiar with our facilities team, and will line up with the systems we're using now, so something we can then manage remotely and on-site.
Hi. How soon after the state approves the plans will you be able to go out to bid? And the second part of the question, from Newfield's and Friar's experience, and my experience too, is this a good time to go out to bid? Do you think you'd get good prices at this time of year?
Yeah, why don't I bring up Tom Demoral from Newfield to field that one, but the short answer to your question is right away, but just as to what the market's bearing at this point when we're going out to bid. May I ask Tom?
Yeah, to answer your first question, probably about two weeks after the approval. We have to assemble the documents and get them out for bid. And the second question, yes, it's first-quarter bidding is an excellent time. Contractors are lining up work for the year, so we should take advantage of that, and we should see that in the numbers.
That's right, thank you.
Will, I had a question jumping off Ann's as far as parent drop-off. So, I understand where it is. How does that become difficult if I'm dropping off a pre-K or a kindergarten student? Because now that student, once inside, has to do a little bit of traveling.
Yeah, the idea is that there would be, the kids are basically rallying in the cafeteria, so we'll be able to feed them all breakfast at all ages, and then they'd be moved by faculty.
Okay, so they'll be meeting their classmates who are getting off, okay.
Right, so we, as all of you know, we've done different samples in the classroom and the cafeteria and different places. We just went through our food audit a couple of months ago, and did quite well. Congratulations to the food service program. But one of the things they really focus on is those pre-K classrooms, and it's kind of drifted back and forth, in the classroom, family-style, cafeteria, et cetera, and it's gone back now to the cafeteria, which is acceptable for the reimbursement rates, but also the socialization of the kids and so forth. So, by having it be a full-service kitchen, Linda and her team were confident, and we're now doing this at Carrington, for example, which had been in the classroom in some classes. Now, everyone is in the cafeteria read as well. So, the same process will work here. So, they'll basically have some smaller tables where those kids will rally, then their professionals and the teachers will help them as needed, and then they'll escort them to their rooms.
Perfect. Mr. President?
Thank you. This is for the architects. What is a chilled beam system for heating and cooling?
So, chilled and heated water is going to come through the tubes that pass over all these classrooms, and instead of sending a ton of heated or cooled air through the building, so that's going to heat and cool the air, so it reduces all of your ductwork by, I think, at least a third.
So, the beams, the energy conduit into the school, that's pretty intriguing.
Yeah.
Radiating, yeah.
Yep, so you'll have fresh air coming in. That'll be what's heated and cooled. You save a lot of energy because you're just heating and cooling fresh air as needed.
Thank you.
Alderman, DG, Van Carlo.
Just, we're doing a construction manager at risk?
Yes.
Guaranteed timeframe and price and...
Yes, and we'll be wrapping, we'll be locking in those prices as we go through this process with these bids. So, this is the, so the biggest ticket, this Phase Three, so as we get, go through that process and the cost analysis after the approval for the state, that will lock in those numbers and those contracts that Mike and his team will work on with us, with the contractors, and yes, et cetera. Now, I just know we have Chill Beam in at Career at least, so it's a technology that we have in other locations, and I've had a few of them in New Haven where I was before.
Any questions for the Commissioners at this point? Alderman?
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
And this is probably more for a bit, that's 677, that's the cap, that's the hard cap. There's no, no more students than 677 entering this building?
All right, the old answer used to be 555 was the hard cap, and sometimes it was hard, and sometimes it was somewhat soft, but that's the target number.
To the, to the number, it really is a formula based upon how these applications have to go into the state, and based on the class size analysis and our contracts and so forth. So, how you put it together is a bit of a science and an art, but as a practical matter on the back end, how we then put the kids in there and fit to the need and adjust, there are some rooms that we have, you know, for pull-out and other services that could, you know, revert back to a classroom or switch from a classroom and vice versa, so there's some flexibility. So, from that hard cap number up or down, I wouldn't say it's a hard one, but it is based upon the design and the plans we put in and the way the state stacks this up. You're basically linking your reimbursement links back to the students, which links back to the square footage of what you can do. So, it's a bit of a science and an art to start it, but once you have it, obviously, you can fill it to your needs and adjust. We do think, as you know, the third classroom per grade was put into effect to accommodate as much as we can in that neighborhood. We had done adjustment to our enrollment analysis, which verified that, so that was a big part of the state's approval of the increased capacity.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
So, I need action on this to send this to our special meeting? So, would one of the committee members today make a motion to approve the final plans, the SCG-042 for the Wendell Cross Project, Phase Three of Five?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Will, item number two, Wendell Cross, general update and design review?
Most of that was what we just did, but just as, I'm not sure if I missed anything, Tom, as far as how we're going on demo.
No, Phase One is going along as planned. Ready to start Phase Two?
So, we're on schedule, demo and abatement. Bids are back for concrete and steel, and going through that process to award those now, and that steel one is a big one. That'll allow us to move quicker through this Phase Three.
There's an article in the paper this week about some pricing changes. Any updates you'd like to give the Commissioners?
Only update I would give is that, you know, we had said before, Mike is here, that, you know, there was some flex in where we thought the numbers would, would end up. There may be action that Mike will be taking from a bond authorization in the coming months, largely dependent upon how this phase and the bids and so forth go. We do certainly expect that there would be this, you know, three-to-five-million-dollar float, if you will, or variance potential, and that's what we want to plan for and be aware of, but we're still working and doing our best to sharpen the pencil, on the one hand, get the building we want with all the educational components, energy efficiencies it needs, but also be as cost-effective as possible. You know, our most recent cost assessments are slightly lower than the one before, so as Tom mentioned before, that bidding time has really worked in our favor thus far. We're hoping that will continue. If it does, we think we'll be in good shape and within that sort of frame that we had discussed all along. So, I think in that respect, we're consistent with what we've said and where we've been. I think having, if we did not follow this path and went back to the drawing board and started all over, we'd be in a worse position on a reimbursement as the state changed the rules during this whole time, and we'd sort of have to begin again, another two years of escalation and so forth. So, no, that was a known risk, which we're willing to take with the mayor and Mike's support on the city side, and we're still well within that parameter, we believe.
And if we go, say, as far as that $5 million number, does that change the scope of the original state application, or are there any repercussions in Hartford?
No, it should not, and frankly, you know, we always have the ability to do more if we choose to, but we have to remember as well that that state approval, there is what is eligible under the DAS rules and what is ineligible, so a big part of our work is balancing that and trying to make sure as much as possible fits within the rules that can be eligible, and thus getting the 79% reimbursement from them. So, all of that is a bit of a science and an art as well, and those will be the continuing discussions we have up with the state in a couple of weeks and as we continue through. But, you know, we feel like we're in a good position for all those discussions.
Any questions for Will? Alderman?
Maybe for Mike. What's the, Mike, what were three to five million at for the project over a bonded period of time, whatever time you choose to use, just per year?
Actually, recently, we did an analysis on what the impact would be for a $5 million number, and the annual debt service would be in the neighborhood of approximately $400,000 a year. I would second Will's comments from the standpoint that the cost estimates did get a little better with the most recent round of bidding, and with hitting the market at the right time with the largest scope piece being the construction, there'll hopefully be an opportunity there to gain some cost savings as well. And it hasn't really been highlighted to this point, but built into the cost estimate that's been reported at that $50.6 million are several millions of dollars of contingencies, cost escalator factors, some scope considerations, and all of that will be fine-tuned once we have the construction bids back, working with the construction manager to get to a guaranteed maximum price. So, when the dust settles, it's still the expectation that there will be an ask for some additional local commitment for this project, but we're remaining very hopeful that it will be within that $3 to $5 million range when all is said and done.
And that's to put you on the spot? Are you more confident towards the three, or more, I mean, not to put you on the spot, but the way it's going looking?
It's really, you know, it really depends on what's going to come back on the bid side, and we, you know, certainly can speak to the fact that on the first two rounds of bids for Phase One and Two, there were a robust number of respondents to the RFP, or the invitation to bids, and, you know, that at the end of the day helped really, as in both cases, the lowest bidder, following the scope review and qualification verifications, ultimately were selected. ultimately were selected. So it bodes very well, again, for where we may be trending with the largest piece about to go out to bid, in all likelihood, before the end of the month.
Thanks, Mike.
I would just note quickly that, you know, going through this abatement and demolition process and not finding a surprise that we were not anticipating was also hugely beneficial. So that could be an area none of us know about until you get in there. So we're past that, so that was good, and now to the construction part, we've really been very mindful of the plans we put together, working with Newfield and Friar, to be focused on the budget side. So we feel like we're in a really good position going forward, taking into account as many of the, making as many of the unknowns known as we can.
Tom?
Thank you. You're probably glad I came late, right?
Always.
I think it's too early to really critique every dollar, right, or RFP, et cetera. My bigger concern is once we do contract, terms and condition and responsibility. We've been taken in the past where folks walk away without responsibility. So right now, that's my bigger concern, is I'm asking you guys to really watch Ts and Cs and responsibility, okay? We can get into nitpicking the dollars when all the RFPs are in, right, or RFQs, I guess, technically. So, but that's my bigger concern, so hopefully you guys watch that. Reed School, certainly, we walked away with some deficiencies. That we had no recourse, unfortunately. I don't want to see that happen again, okay? So please be cautious with those pieces of the contract, okay? Thank you, thank you.
One item.
So here's my question. What's the debt services that the city pays on Carrington that might go along with what Wendell Cross would cost us?
I probably can't speak tonight, you know, with any degree of good accuracy, but, you know, at the end of the day, what really makes these projects viable is the significant reimbursement rate that Waterbury benefits from the state of Connecticut at nearly 80%. And so, you know, when we were looking at the, when you look at Wendell Cross and the original projection of 46.2 million, it was essentially the local obligation towards that from a bonding was approximately 22% of that number, and that would have been the same, very close, as it relates to any of the schools that have been built or renovated and expanded over the past 10-plus years. Again, Waterbury's been very fortunate to hold that rate. We are one of the few districts that are seeing enrollment increases throughout the state of Connecticut. And again, just to track back to a comment that Will had made, you know, there, in this evaluation, whether to go back to the state with a revised application, you know, a huge piece of that decision was ultimately the risk of compromising the reimbursement rate, because if this converted to a new construction, we would have lost 10% on that reimbursement rate. So when the dust settles, even though we may take on the full percentage of whatever the net additional millions may be, whether it's three to five million, when you consider that against losing 10% on the whole cost of the project, I think net-net we'll be in a much, much better place.
Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you. All right, I know this may be early to start talking about this, but I did, I was glad that it was in the contract and that is the compliance with Good Jobs Ordinance, et cetera. So when the time comes, as Commissioner Van Stone mentioned, things that he was looking for, I'm looking for, and I think we're all looking for, the compliance with our Good Jobs Ordinance, receiving the reports that we received in the past to make sure and to ensure that we give jobs first to Waterbury residents and minorities, minority contractors, et cetera. Again, I understand this is early, but just to know, it's on the table that this is what we'll be looking for.
Was that Commissioner Harvey or Commissioner Awat? I can't quite remember. But I can report to you that the first phases of the work that are in place, literally right around the holiday, I got the letter from former Commissioner Awat about our compliance thus far, and we are hitting the targets there. Obviously, the next phase is the big one.
Right.
But we've started off well, and credit to Newfield and their managers on the ground to make sure that the contractors are aware of those, and Rash in our office as well, and compliant with those and making sure we get those reports in.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else for Will? How's St. Joe's?
Well, Lord Elias is here, St. Joe's is going great, I think, right? Norians there, thumbs up, yeah.
All right.
So they've moved in nicely, I mean, everything's worked out. I can monitor the cameras from my desk, which is, I don't do.
A little terrifying, but also all right.
On a regular basis, but, and the city's been very helpful as well, the transportation side, the support, it's been a very, very smooth transition over there. They're very, I think, as we went through the process of discussing this, I think the staff is very excited about the future, but they're doing well where they are.
Terrific. I know the early, the early reports are terrific, I just want to make sure we haven't forgotten them, we're still making sure they get everything they need.
They still have heat.
Still have heat, perfect. Anything else for Will? Thank you, anything for the good of the order?
Nope.
No, I think if there's other members of the committee that might be sitting back here, as long as I could.
Carrie, any questions? All right, well, if there's nothing else, then for this meeting, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
I try.
Hi, Gary.
Am I real soon?
I'm here.
How are you?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this special meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education on Thursday, January 2nd, 2020. This special meeting is for the Committee on Building and School Facilities. Vote on what we just heard. So we'll start off with a silent prayer. And tonight, for our Pledge of Allegiance, I would be honored to Commissioner Van Stone lead us.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call attendance, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Arso?
Here.
Commissioner Brown Aladorno?
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Present.
President Fatale?
Present. I would also like to acknowledge our two student representatives who are joining us tonight, Presley Anthony and Nefertiti Doughty. Just for my education, where do you guys go to school?
Waterbury.
Okay, great, thank you, both of you.
Yes.
We'll start off with any public address to the board for this committee meeting. Hearing none, we'll move on to the Committee on Building and School Facilities.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Building and School Facilities recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approved the request for review of final plans, Form SCG-042, Phase Three of Five, for the Wendell Cross Elementary School Project, which is State Project Number 151-0295EARR. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Or roll call? Oh, discussion, please, I've got a problem with discussion.
It's okay.
I thought we had enough discussion, right? Hearing none? May I have a, no, roll call, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Take the motion over here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I didn't think you wanted discussion on that topic. Okay, great, thank you. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first workshop meeting for the Waterbury Board of Education for 2020. I would ask our student, Nefertiti Doughty, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance at this point.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and welcome to the club. Roll call attendance, please. No, not tonight, no, not the regular. First docket, Principal Robin Henry, ear up. Good evening, Happy New Year to you both.
Yes, good evening, welcome to Rotella and Happy New Year. For those of you who might not know me, my name is Robin Henry. I've been principal here for six years, and this is my vice-principal, Dana Wallace, who's been with me for five years, she's my right-hand. So this evening, what we had planned for you is a couple of things. We were hoping to have our students perform, but it was a little hard for them to commit over the week's break, so we decided we have some student work that they did, we have a video to show you. Also, Ms. Bacaro, our teacher, has lots of artwork displayed for if you get a chance to view it, and she also put on the tables some motivational stones, so please, there's some on the chairs, too. I found one that I liked, kind, that's what we promote each morning, is kindness, so please feel free to choose any of them and bring some home to friends and family. As you know, we are an art magnet school, and each year, we have to, we have a lottery, and that's going to be coming up in February, so as, I'm not sure if you know, but we've been having difficulty keeping our percentages 70/30, 70% Waterbury, 30% out of district. And we're not really sure, you know, there's several things, I think, that are due to it, but one is the distance that the boys and girls have to travel on the bus. Sometimes they're on the bus for almost an hour, sometimes longer, especially at the beginning of the school year. It makes me very nervous because the parents are very upset because it takes a long time for their children to get home. But we have been, you know, having a difficulty trying to keep that 70/30 with the other districts. So what we're trying to do this year is to do more promotional ways to get people to understand and know what Rotella is all about. So we have what's called a troops and companies, and the troops, this is for fourth and fifth graders, they have to try out for various arts, forms of arts, and we have a TV studio that they have to try out for, and they actually create, perform their own scripts and video, and it's a work of art. I think, those of you who were here probably five years ago, we tried to do a live streaming from the TV studio with parents, and it didn't work out so well, the noise, it just didn't go well. So we do have a video set up, this first video that we're going to show you, it's very short, but it's, the students created this to help promote Rotella, and we're hoping, and they're going to do shorter clips, and so hopefully you'll start seeing them on Twitter and Facebook to hopefully get parents and families to see what we're all about. So, Mr. Michon, oh, before we start, I wanted to recognize my staff, if they could please stand. I want to thank them all, I know how hard it is, I want to thank them for coming out tonight, they are such a supportive, great staff, so thank you so much. Okay, so Mr. Michon is part of the TV media troop, along with Ms. Romano, and this is the first video recruitment that they created.
Hi, what's your name and what town do you live in?
My name is Emily and I come from Terryville. What do you love most about Rotella and why?
Well, I love most about Rotella is definitely the teachers, because they make you feel welcome if you're new, and they make you feel comfortable if you are new or not.
Do you like the arts?
I do like the arts.
What art forms do you do at Rotella?
We do visual art, vocal music, instrumental music, drama, and dance.
What would you say to the kids that live out of town and want to come to Rotella?
I would say that even if it means you have to get up earlier and there's a longer car or bus ride to get to school, I would still recommend going to Rotella because I have a lot of fun here every day.
Some of the, yes, they did a great job. So those are just some of the opportunities that they have during the troops and companies time, which is only one day a week for 45 minutes, one period, for 45 minutes. Did you have a question?
Yeah. You could finish talking.
The other video that we wanted to show is, we're also, as I said, with the kindness, promoting different ways that the boys and girls to be kind and following the expectations in the school, so this next video, you will see the students created a little video of what to do and what not to do.
Good morning, welcome to Rotella Starcast. Today we are talking about doing the right thing.
We will show you three skits about doing the right thing, and the first scene students will do the wrong thing, and the second scenes, in the second scene, students will do the right thing.
We hope you learn ways to be kind to each other.
We hope you enjoy the show.
Ben, you should not be throwing your pen and paper on the floor, that is unacceptable and is not school behavior.
I am so angry!
Ben, answer me.
No!
Answer me or I'll write you up.
Or I'll write you up, haha, no.
Ha ha. No.
Yes, Ben.
Miss Gordon, I need help because this problem is so frustrating, and I need to get a drink of water to refresh my anger.
Okay. So how about you go get a drink of water and then I'll help you.
Okay.
Okay, let's get through this problem.
So, great job, Ben. And those videos, we'd like to, uh, show to the students in the auditorium. That's where we meet first thing in the morning, and we figured we could do these, um, videos throughout the school year to remind them of, um, the right way, the expectations that we have for them. Any questions? Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez, you have the floor.
I have to wait for the big man.
Well, would you like to have a discussion for us?
So you stated that you were having trouble with your numbers. Where's the lack from? Is it the seventy percent from Waterbury or the thirty percent from the surrounding cities, or?
Uh, very easy to get our seventy percent. We have, uh, plenty of Waterbury students applying, uh, but it's that thirty percent of the out-of-district, um, participating towns. And even, um, you know, Watertown, uh, we have, you know, New Haven, we have students coming from New Haven, Watertown. Again, the problem is that they have to provide their own transportation, and that makes it difficult. Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, so, is your problem just indicative of this school, or are the rest of the magnet schools in the, in the district suffering the same?
We're all feeling it.
Okay, it's all the same problem?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Commissioner Charles Stango.
Thank you. Um, when you talk about, I'm, I'm glad you opened this door a little bit. When you talk about the, um, your percentages, how close are you, or how far are you?
I mean, we, we are right now seventy thirty, I mean, or maybe twenty-eight, and, um, but if we lose any students now that are out of district, we don't have students on the list to choose from. So we will have to choose Waterbury students, and then that's going to throw our percentage off. So we're very close right now, we're not, but it's something that we really need to be aware of and start doing more recruiting.
So, if, if your population is, is X going into a school year, and your seventy thirty doesn't do it, can you bring X, fill up the X with Waterbury?
We do.
You can do that. The state allows you to do that.
Well, we want to keep our enrollment at, uh, six hundred and fourteen. The problem is, if you, and, and it's never happened, so I really don't know what the consequences, but supposedly if you don't keep your seventy thirty, you don't keep that percentage, you lose your funding. So we don't want that to happen.
Right, we don't want to do that. And you have plans in place for recruiting, um?
That's what we're developing now, is, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Commissioner Brown?
Thank you. Just a question in terms of the enrollment in the surrounding school districts. We're seeing that there might be even a decline in their own school districts, so is that ass, you know, exacerbating the problem in terms of their own school enrollment is down?
Yes, I, um, honestly, that I don't know. That if that's impacting us, um, I mean, I have noticed through the years that, because I was here as vice principal and now principal, I mean, we used to have like five students from Thomaston, but we now have, I don't know, maybe twenty, thirty.
Twenty or so.
So that has increased, but, um, now as times going, times going by, I'm seeing that we're getting less and less. Like, each district at the beginning of the lottery, uh, the out-of-district gets six spots for their pre-K, and sometimes they don't even, we don't even get the six students for their pre-K. And I mean, I get it, it's, you know, they're little, and that's a far travel, but we'd like to get them when they're young and get them right into the school.
And what other question in terms of, have you had any curriculum changes in your school lately?
Not different than the district, the same as the district.
Same district. Even though you're in art school, you still have the?
Oh, we still do, it's, it's getting more difficult, but we still, um, we, um, presently had our, um, Ms. Marcia, our dance teacher that we've had for many years that integrates the dance, uh, she wanted to retire, and I begged her because we didn't have anybody, so I said, please, please, just so do three through, uh, five, which is what she did for the beginning of the school year, and we just, um, hired a new, uh, dance person that's going to work with our pre-K to grade two. So we have somebody in place. Yeah, we don't want to lose our arts.
Good, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, um, Ms. Henry, I'd like to thank you and your staff for being here this evening and for the presentation, and also, just as an, uh, informational piece, as we, uh, look at some recruitment, um, for our entire district, because we do realize that sometimes other people do not have a rough time trying to recruit our students. We want to reverse that. And, uh, so we do plan either the latter part of January or the beginning of February to have a recruitment fair, where our schools will have an opportunity to invite others from surrounding districts, as well as from within our own district, to see some of the options that we have, uh, for Rotella, for Maloney, uh, for, um, for Career, for the Academic Academy, uh, for the Transition Academy, for the early college high that we're anticipating for 2020. Uh, we want people to know what we have here, uh, because we can provide a quality education, and we provide it at no cost. So we want to make certain that people in our area know what we have to offer, and it is very competitive, and I believe that we are poised to begin competing and getting our students to attend the schools that I think they deserve to attend. So you can expect that, and, and I know you're going to put on a fantastic show, you guys always do, but just know that that's also happening, that could also be another step for the excellent work that you're already doing.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, and, and I do have to say that, uh, Rotella does have the Teacher of the Year in the same finalist, and she's in the audience tonight, too.
Come on up. You don't get to sit back there.
Come on up. We want to shake your hand.
You can do that, that would be amazing.
We'll put you, we'll put you in video. I mean, you're our promotion.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Our next agenda item is public speaking. If anyone from the public would like to address this board, now is that time. Please feel free to come forward. I'll take that as no one's interested, so thank you very much. We will move on to the next agenda item. Committee on Finance, request for approval of a construction contract with J.A. Rosa Construction LLC for the fit out of the Waterbury Public School Central Commissary.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Hello. Happy New Year.
Linda Francis, Food Service Director.
Adam Shaven, Calum Gray.
Mike O'Connor, Facilities Manager.
We're here this evening for approval of the contract that you have before you. This is the second phase of the project. This is the actual commissary part of it. We're, um, almost complete with the refrigerator freezer, the backup generator, so we are here for the, um, like I said, approval of the next phase of the contract. J.A. Rosa Construction is the?
We have done business with them.
We have, we currently.
And this is a one point six million dollar?
Correct.
Is this considered?
Not to exceed the one.
Is this considered a challenging fit out compared to where you were before?
Well, well, compared to where we were before, we had no, no space whatsoever.
So it is, uh, it is a challenge, okay. This solves all your problems for how long?
Uh, until we start replenishing our fund balance account, and then we have to.
When do you think that happens?
Uh, I would say within five years.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for, uh, our friends from the com, Mr. Orso, who you used to deal a lot with before, so get ready.
Get ready. Quick question, nothing from the general fund, it's just funding source?
Correct, USDA.
USDA. So it's not nothing from the general fund?
That's correct.
And also, and I, I was involved with before, the commissary, you're just doing a whole full kitchen. I mean, that's what the commissary?
Correct. Correct. It will replace, um, we will be serving foods to our, uh, approximately sixteen, um, warming kitchens around, around the district. The, the cooking kitchens will remain as cooking kitchens and, and we'll take over what we have been outsourcing in the past.
Correct.
Any other questions, Commissioner Brown?
I just want to commend you for your patience, your diligence. It seems like you've been here for two years. Has it been two-year process?
Yeah.
We can't wait to, we can't wait for the ribbon cutting.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Great team, yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too. Thank you.
Our next agenda item, Committee on Finance, Grant Status Report. Doreen and Linda Riddick. Good evening, ladies.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Happy New Year, Commissioners, Dr. Ruffin, students. We are going to give an update on the nineteen twenty grant list. Very positive to receive many of the grants that we do. This is where we're able to do different programming, aside from what the general fund can provide, which is strictly just on the operational end. Um, so we split it up between two, um, pages, so the federal grants would be on the first page, which totals for nineteen twenty, uh, thirty million, one sixty-five, nine forty-three, and the second page, under our state grants, is fifty-six million, two oh four, two one six. The, the grants that are highlighted in red, we have not really received the award yet. The applications have been in process, we just haven't received the funding, so that's why we're just showing those in red. As you know, most of these grants, um, we start the fiscal year in July, sometimes our applications don't go in until October, November, and so sometimes we don't receive all of our funding, um, until after, um, into the second half of the fiscal year. But just to go down quickly on the federal grants, again, this is between entitlement grants, which is what Linda Riddick Behrens and her office handle, and, um, competitive grants, which is under Louise Allen Brown, uh, that she applies for. So, under some of these federal grants, again, we have the Twenty-First Century, those are after-school programs. Uh, we have a Carl Perkins, the funding isn't in yet, um, but you know, the Carl Perkins grant is for the high schools, uh, for career tech, so on and so forth. Uh, we have Education Homeless, McKinney-Vento Act, Fresh Fruits and Vegetables, um, which is not part of food service, it's a different type of grant program to allow different, uh, fruits that are not served during lunchtime, but to give healthy options to students. Um, you have our IDEA grant, which is our special education grant. We, that is a two-year grant, so we always have a carryover going in, uh, the same years when we have the new, uh, grant coming in. Um, we have immigrant youth, um, support for parent, pregnant and parenting teens, we have a little carryover, and we have, we're still waiting on the, uh, current one. We have Title One, uh, again, a two-year grant. We have the current one at nineteen million, you see, that's the eleven million, three thirty-seven. There was a carryover from the beginning of July at two point seven. All that will be spent down, and then we'll, we'll continue with, um, spending down on the Title One nineteen twenty-one, and I can have Linda speak a little bit more on, um, the entitlement grants once I get to the end. Um, Title Two, Two A, again, um, that's strictly mostly for like, uh, PD. We have a lot of our technical, technology salaries are split into that grant along with Title One. Title Three for the English language. Title Four is, again, one of our newer, um, grants that's into our second year, we have a carryover from the previous, and we have a new grant in this year for nineteen twenty-one, um, Title Four, and I'll have Linda speak just a little bit more on the details of that. The next group, you'll see there's, uh, from Bucks Hill, you'll see the black, and then you're going down into the red. That's a school improvement grant. Um, the one that's in the black is, we did receive some additional funding from unused SIG money from the state that other, maybe other districts didn't spend, and we did get a little bit of additional money. The one in the red is what we are applying for, for nineteen twenty, and this will be our third year of that grant. One of the good things about this is that Bucks Hill, Driggs, a lot of these elementary schools were, at the time, focus schools, so when we were given this opportunity to apply for these grants, it's supposed to be for five years, and one of the good things about this is that some of these schools are now off of, right, which is a great thing, but we still have some money sustaining for the next few years, so, um, which is, which is great. So we're still waiting on the funding for SIG Three. Um, so basic, and then we also have the Workforce Innovative Opportunity Act, um, where students work throughout the city, which that grant will end in, um, February, so there are some, certain students are like vendors, and they work in different areas of, of, of the city and, and different offices. So, um, you'll see the bulk of this thirty million, though, is in Title One and in IDEA. The second page will be our state grant. Uh, that totals fifty-six million, two, um, and we'll see the nice big red one, fourth down, the Alliance, that's twenty-nine million of that, or almost thirty million of that. Fifty-six million is in the Alliance grant. Um, as you know, the Alliance grant is part of ECS, and in nineteen twenty, we did receive an increase of six point seven. We did not receive the grant, the application is in, we're still waiting on final approval, um, but you'll notice that we have a nice increase this year, and you know that when we passed the budget last year, we used like one point five million of that to offset, we had to use that to offset our operating budget. And then again, just to go back to the top, we have adult education, we have, um, the provider, uh, grant, which is sixty percent state, and then there's a local match of the forty percent. The one point eight is just the amount of the state grant. Bilingual, we have extended school hours, which is part of the Alliance grant, uh, have not received. We have Family Resource Center at Wilson and Reed, at a hundred thousand each. Then we have the carryover for the low-performing schools. These are bonded, these are to do, um, you know, try to get some Chromebooks, carts, smart TVs, ThinkPads, desktops. These are for, again, low-performing. Um, we are waiting on nineteen twenty-one, we are still waiting on bonding authorization, so, once we know that, I'll, I can update this a, and, and give you like, another update in a couple months. The magnet schools, we just talked about, um, this is the total for all three. In the past, we have, there's always been some chance that this was going to get caught. We believe we're receiving full funding, again, though, based on the students, on, on the count, so, um, so that's a positive, and we usually get that award somewhere around March, uh, but the application did go in in October. Primary Mental Health, again, these are, it's nineteen thousand, it's just we paid for some individuals that go to Wendell Cross Sprague and dug in. Priority Schools, again, is part of the Alliance grant, uh, separate, but it's part of it, um, that's, there's a lot of salaries for a lot of supportive teachers, bilingual kindergarten and so on. Uh, prime, uh, summer school is under primary, um, Priority Schools, I'm sorry, which, we've already had summer school happen, and, and again, we're still waiting on the funding. Quality Enhancement, we have School Readiness, again, that's nine million, uh, those for the twelve providers, uh, for our school readiness programs. Um, we also have School Security Grant Three, but we're finishing up, and the School Security Grant Four, um, the amounts do not include the match, there's a twenty, almost a twenty-one percent match, um, on the city side, on the education side, so for Security Grant Three, there's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar match. For Security Four, there's a three hundred and sixty-seven thousand match. Again, that would be over the, the two years, and that's something we had budgeted and took that into consideration when we were doing the operating budget. And then the SDE is another type of after-school program, it's a two-year grant, um, when it's done, it's done, there is no matching to that, like the Twenty-First Century where there's some matching. So in total, um, this is fifty-six million for state grants. that we can offer our students. So if anybody has any questions for Linda or I, or you want further explanation?
Any questions, Commissioner Van Snow? Thank you, Mrs. President, through you. Of the fifty-six million, what is received and what is pending, percentage, roughly? Because you mentioned one is not coming till March.
Well, if you, yeah, so now the awards, whatever's in red, we haven't had, we haven't received.
Wow.
The award yet. We receive money, though, as we spend, so as we draw down, most of these is how we receive the cash, once it's awarded.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's kind of a ledger thing going on that?
Yeah.
We're just kind of making things work?
Yeah.
Of this fifty-six million, there's quite a bit of this is mandated, but not all of it is mandated, right? Some is just straight-out grants?
Well, I mean, of this fifty-six?
Like focus schools?
Yeah.
Magnets?
Well, the magnet schools.
They're not really mandated, but they're... I'm just trying to get an impression of what the state owes us that we're kind of floating.
Right, of this fifty-six million, I mean, we're looking at thirty million just in Alliance.
Right.
You know what I mean? That's, you know, that's part of ECS, so it's, it's, instead of going into ECS funding, it's coming to us separately.
Okay.
So, and that's, now we're in our eighth or ninth year, I think, of that now, so I mean, there's a lot worth sustaining in that grant.
If we go back in time, many of these we've had before.
Yes.
And we're continuing through application, et cetera. How have we done with using these funds to go after these categories? Are we spending eighty, ninety, hundred percent of the funds? Are we?
Well, we have to spend all these funds.
I know we have to spend, we have to spend. For the categories that they're listed for, are we putting all the funds towards that? Are we utilizing, like ECS, we have some options, right? We can, we have rules, of course.
Right, so certain, these grants have narratives. There's narratives written, grant goes in for approval, based on the state or the federal government, they're approving what we've put into the application. So there's a certain tolerance on the line, or the overall grant, right? When you go over that, you have to make a revision, so that goes back. So if you, so if you run into an issue on maybe something you wanted to purchase, and now it becomes there's an issue in the procurement side of it, and it's not working out, and you're not going to be able to do all of that.
That's Rocco's fault.
Then, sometimes. So then, what you'd have to do is you have to go in, and then they'd have to, everyone would have to put their heads back together, which you, how you want to spend it, and revise it, send that back out and get the approval.
Okay.
So, it's not like you could just do what you kind of want to do.
Exactly. So there's regulations, however, there is some, some leeway, but, so, obviously, this is a, fifty-six is a third or so, if you want to compare it to our operating budget.
On our operating budget, yeah.
Right, it's pretty close. So it's a significant number.
Now, I mean, when you're looking at this thirty million in the Alliance, I mean, we're looking at a lot of operating costs.
Yeah.
That are in there.
And, and that's what I'm cautious about. I mean, we have to operate, obviously, right? And I, you know me, I always say, what are we actually putting in the classroom, right?
Right.
So that's why I just want to be cautious.
Understandable.
I know we have, we have guidelines, but we, we can do things, right? We can, we can spend it on salaries, we can spend it on, you mentioned, I think, TVs, media, et cetera.
Yeah, depending on the type, depending on the grant, like the low-performing bond, those are kind of more to do like equipment, technology, things like that.
I'm, I'm really trying to get at giving folks a sense of confidence, which I have, that when we earmark for a category, we're doing that.
Right.
So, you know, because people think we can just, you know, get this dollar figure and do whatever we want with it. And that's not true.
Well, and at the end of the day, these, they get audited.
Exactly.
We get audited, these grants get audited. You know, we've, we've had pretty clean audits over the last several years, which we're proud of, so we follow the guidelines of the grant, stay with, you know, within the requirements of it, so.
Okay. I am concerned, though, with those that are outstanding.
I mean, it's just that we have, some, we've gotten like pre-approval, we just haven't totally received the award. Some of these went in very late, because that's when the application was due, so, but we should be fine.
I'd still rather have it in your account than waiting for, especially with our state.
Yeah.
So, but I, I think you're, you're giving us the confidence that when we say we have a grant, or whatever category these fall into, we're doing the right thing, and we're doing the best for our students.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, if we want to change or write it differently based on the needs, then we do that, we can do that. And if, as long as it's approved.
Grant writing's an art form, and I appreciate everything you guys do to get this money for us, because, like I said, it's about a third of our operating budget. So people need to keep in mind, to offer this, and once you offer it, you're not taking it away, right? That becomes operating budget, if we don't get folks like you to write these grants. So I appreciate the work you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Doreen and Linda, hello. Linda, I'm going to put you on the spot. Not, I don't really want to, but I just need to know, as we start, you know, our new assignments, committees, et cetera, parent engagement, DPAC, funds, where is that? Is that under the title, is that all under the Title I grant?
It's under Title I, yes.
Okay.
It's a set aside.
And, and have we decided how that's going to be used, particularly with DPAC, and the, I think we have some new plans in terms of how we're going to utilize DPAC? Is, are those funds then going to go to the schools? So I'll just let you talk about that.
Parent involvement or family engagement is one of the set-asides that's required by law. So the funding is at least one percent of the entire grant, our funding is above one percent. So every school and the district will get the same amount they had last year, and the district is broken into DPAC, Marion Merrill School Governance, some for ESSA in case new principals need money that goes beyond what they have there, and Adella's bilingual program. So they will get the same amount, they'll have the same opportunity to plan it the way they want to, and the accountant will set it up, and they'll spend accordingly, make sure they spend it by the end of the grant year.
Okay, so those who are on, the officers of DPAC, they know pretty much how they're going to spend their money? Has that been decided yet, or?
Yes, they have, well, actually, they're still in eighteen twenty, they're spending their eighteen twenty narrative, they just got it back to us, and so they'll get that, and then they'll have the opportunity to spend their next money. We just don't give them the money, the new money, until they spend the old money.
Got it.
It just doesn't make sense to have you sitting on money that you can't spend.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just had a quick question. In terms of the magnet school line, just for clarification, the eight point six million is just for the magnet schools, is over and above the money that the city puts into those schools? It's special money?
Yeah, this is just the, yeah, this is just the, the operating grant from the state for the magnets.
And that's, and that's how they fund their extra programs?
They, they do fund some staffing, there's some staffing that comes out of this. Normally, what we've tried to do in the past is, we would, the, the general fund would cover like the academic portion, and so some of the extra was coming out of the grant.
The magnet school.
But they do maybe pay for an administrator, one of the administrators out of their grant, or two, depending, you know, like, I think WAM's pays two, and they pay for a lot of their arts teachers from there, and then as well as all their other programming. We don't, the general fund doesn't really provide, other than if something is more of a district-wide purchase, individual, like schools, we don't give them like a supply budget. So most of that is, strictly comes out of here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Our student representatives, any questions? No, that's the right answer. I, I'm not discouraging you, but it's a good sign. I just have an algorithmic question. The twenty-nine million dollar coconut for ECS Alliance.
Mm-hmm.
How does one actually fit that number in to a schedule? Like, the twenty-nine million, do you tabulate what you need, that you want to cover in that category?
Again, this is our, I think we're going into our eighth year, so we have established expenses already from year one, and a lot of this was covering operating costs, because the operating budget was flat-funded, and the funding for ECS went into Alliance. So as we were, we were faced with flat funding and increases for administrators, teachers, white collar, blue collar, we didn't have the funding to support that. So we had to utilize part of the Alliance grant, because it's broken up between reform and non-reform. So we had to utilize the non-reform side to offset our operating costs. And that just, pretty much, we keep building and sustaining off of that. This year is where we've seen a huge jump in this budget, and then, no, last year and then this year. There was a, a jump, we never received this type of an increase. So, and we had teachers that were at zero at the time, but we didn't know where we were going to be with this Alliance grant, or what the state was going to do, if they were going to reduce it at all. Was a year where we were now able to do some, have other options to do. Darren put together, and, and Dr. Rodriguez put together some curriculum initiatives that are now in here. We brought on the Academic Academy, was able to be funded through here. There is, I believe we did something with, on IT position. So we were able to do some extra things as we brought in new supervisors. We were able to now, an area where they have, that they can maybe get some different materials and supplies and curriculums. And so that's kind of like one of the positives that we finally have had, without just having it be just sustainable to what we've already had in there. It's the first year where we kind of had, able to do something more and new.
Okay.
So.
So, from a liability or a risk factor, what's the over-under? Are you going to hit that target, do you think, on ECS?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, definitely, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Got it.
No other questions? Next agenda item is Ms. Biola on the, on the Committee on Finance, November monthly expenditure report. Thank you, Linda.
Okay, this is just the monthly expenditure through, through the month of November. This is on the operating budget, a hundred and fifty-eight million three seventy-five, which is what the city has provided us. That exactly is not how we're able to run this budget, we do need more funding, as you'll see, we need a hundred and seventy-nine million, and you can see that we have other funding offsetting what we truly need for the operating budget. Again, as I discussed earlier, if you go to the last page, you can see other funding, you'll see Alliance non-reform, and then we made some budget reductions that increased what we were able to move other expenses over to the Alliance grant, as I said, the one point five. We've been fortunate enough, I, I think through a lot of attrition and, and tight budgeting controls, that we were able to keep our contingency intact, which has helped us to offset this current year budget. Now, you know, we are in November, I'm not, I can't say where we're going to be at this point with some of that contingency, but it is needed. So just to kind of go through some of the areas, you know, we're looking, we do have some vacancies in a lot of our specialized, specialized areas that could, are surplusing. Some movement with administrators will, will be surplusing a little bit there, as well as in our school maintenance, we have a, a lot of like carpenters and plumbing and painter positions not being able to be filled. I believe we recently are going to be hiring a few, finally, so you can see that we have some attrition that is helping us, especially with paraprofessionals, you know, make the kind of come and go. So that is helping us, but if you look like in the middle area of this expense report, you're going to see where we're having some issues. So we're having issues with transportation, with busing special education out of district, busing our pre-K, our special ed pre-K students. Out-of-district tuition, again, that's going to go into the hole. We're, we're monitoring it closely, but, I mean, how much more of that, that, that's going to go in the red, I mean, it could be a little bit more significant. So those are our areas that we're looking, I don't think we're going to surplus too much in our utilities, I think we kind of brought that down, that used to kind of help us out a little bit, but, you know, we're just keeping a close eye on, on all of these accounts, and, you know, we'll just keep updating you as much as we can, and if we need transfers, we'll, we'll definitely be back here.
You're not losing sleep yet, right?
I'm always thinking about it, always thinking about it.
Any questions for Doreen while we have her? Thank you, Doreen.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night. Next agenda item is Mr. Clark, Committee on Finance, requests approval of a contract with Stanley, Convergent Security Solutions for Monitoring and Servicing of Security Systems. Oh, and actually, Mr. Clark is up there for the next.
Next three.
Next.
Or five, sorry.
You're right to the end.
Right to the end. So good evening again, folks. These three are, next three are contracts we've had historically, we've been working internally and with our friends across the street to, to push these forward. The first one, Stanley, is related to essentially our school alarms, the coding in and out, burglar alarms and so forth. We've been working with them for many, many years. In many respects, it's a de facto sole source agreement at this point, based on the technology that's in the buildings, so we're asking for your approval to continue that agreement. The second one is, relates to our environmental compliance. This, we're required to do certain testing and have on-call services available to be compliant with AHERA and other environmental responsibilities, and this is a continuation of, of the services that are outlined by the state, and otherwise, we would need available hourly rates associated with any responses that are necessary should a circumstance come up. The last of this, of the three here is another sort of a continuation, if you will, or approval of a current vendor that's been with us for a while. This is the SNE contract. We've got a couple of different arrangements with the management of our HVAC heating systems. This contract covers about six or eight schools, I believe, helps us manage, monitor alarms, on-off systems, they provide some technical assistance onsite, weekly, and in the fall, and heating, and then the spring cooling startup. So they're onsite to make sure everything's working from a maintenance perspective and working with our staff to monitor all of the systems in those buildings. So that one as well is essentially proprietary, longstanding arrangement with that, with that company, so we're asking for the continuation of those three agreements.
Any questions from anyone for Will while we have him? Commissioner Van Snow?
Just quickly, Will, we've been happy with the previous years of these agreements?
Yes, I'm sorry, shouldn't have mentioned that, all, all three. We're close with Chris Harmon, his team, and Roche, we're satisfied with the services provided each and their responsiveness when needed.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Will. I guess the next one is the Committee on School Facilities.
Yeah, I think both seven and eight here are the internal and external uses, I don't think there's anything outside the ordinary from a historical perspective on either of these, some of the usual suspects, starting to see some of our spring events appear on the calendar here, and the, all the uses of the facilities or community programs that we've worked with in the past, and primarily water-based.
Any comments, questions? Thomas, the floor is yours.
I'm good.
Okay. Now, I'm worried.
We're going to swim some laps later.
So we've accomplished the entire agenda, except for the superintendent's updates to the board, which will be put on file. Anything you want to bring in? to the board, which will be put on file, anything you wanna bring into the equation?
Just very quickly to mention that we will work towards having a recruitment fair on behalf of our district, just FYI, you'll be hearing more about it in my memos to you, as well as, we should be beginning, January, February, talks of how we're gonna continue to recruit for the Academic Academy, as well as, I would like to send you within the next few days a memorandum of understanding with Post University as we look at early college high school, which will begin in the spring, actually, in the fall of 2020. And I, after review of it, I will share it with you, and then we'll move it on so that we could begin the entire process of how we're going to partner with Post, they're very excited about it, I'm thrilled, and I think you will be, too, and I think our students and families, after we have that plan very well articulated, we're gonna go out in community forums and begin talking to families about what this could mean for their students.
Great. Any other comments, discussion points?
I just, I just want to...
Commissioner Brown?
One, just one question. Is this an unusual amount of transfers I'm seeing, or is this pretty normal? It just seems like a lot of transfers for this time of year.
It's the open transfers?
So, so it's, so they're in the job, and it's gonna be permanent?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not actually changing jobs?
No, just a couple.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
We ask that question every year.
Yes, you do. Yeah, I should've read that, I was like, you know, a lot of people leave.
Thank you.
I think we've all asked it now, though, so congratulations.
Superintendent, you have the floor?
Our, our student representatives are going to be poised and ready to do a report on their schools, I believe they're gonna do that for the actual board session that will occur on the 16th, is that correct? 'Cause they've, they've talked with their peers and as well as communicated with their principals, or is this something that you are ready to do tonight?
They have.
On the 16th, right?
Looks like next meeting.
I think, I think it's...
The next meeting, yeah. But, but on a regular basis, at one of the board meetings, the, the students will have an update based on feedback that they've received from their peers, as well as an update on their respective schools to share with the board, so that it's gonna be a part of the agenda and not going to be something that will catch them off-guard.
We look forward to it. Thank you for being here. Vice President Harvey?
Just like to make the comment, just piggyback on the superintendent's comments, that it, it is highly recommended that we put student report, or however we're going to word that, on the agenda, so that our students are engaged, and, you know, that we are supporting them, and that we are interested in the student voice, okay? So those reports, looking forward to that, and President Begnaud, I'm not sure if we would put that in our regular meeting agenda or workshop, so that is according to the bylaws, I think, between you and the superintendent as terms of...
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
You know, figure it out, but...
Maybe do both, just so we get a practice run in.
But I think either way, it's, it's just very good, and I like this step forward that we are doing to, to make sure that you guys are included in our, our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I've been advised we have no executive session tonight, so Happy New Year. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.